Second, you've got Corruption Council, excuse me, Corporate Council, taking committees into backdoor, closed-door, illegal meetings under the pretense of lawyer-client privilege. Okay? Telling them how to vote, giving them unreliable information. Okay? And, um... Charges against the man mysteriously disappearing out of the clerk's office, altering the law of ethics to suit the purpose of the city. I guess it's local rule, they can do what they want. But by amending the, um, some of the clauses, you take the teeth out of the law that they have no authority to impose any kind of remedy. Okay? That being said, we'll move on to the budget. Now, you cooked up this budget, presented a deficit budget of $1 million, and six months later found close to $3 million in surplus. Now, I do not buy the answers to the mistakes or oversights in the budget. I don't buy that you don't know new employees from old employees. I believe you did that deliberately. I'm gonna continue to remind you of your shortcomings, your corruption, every month right up until you get re-elected. You have fake news over here that would get fired if they printed any of this. Okay? I'm not going away. I've been a factor in this community a lot longer than a lot of people been here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please.
Guten Abend, which is German for good evening. I'm Hildegard Edling, President of the Kingston Mennekor and Dommencor. We're in Ward Four at 37 Greenkill Avenue. We just celebrated our 150th anniversary, and sadly, neither of the two officials from the city deemed it important enough to come to either of our events. That said, I'd just like to tell you a little about us. I'm nervous, I hate to speak in front of a bunch of people. Let me conduct a meeting, I'm fine, I'll sing in front of a bunch of people, but talk, forget it. So, to celebrate our anniversary, we had a 38th Singer Fest, which means Singer's Festival, which is sponsored by the New York State Singer Bund, which is a singers' organization. We had a total of six German singing societies here in the city, 100 singers. We had a wonderful concert at Redeemer Lutheran Church, where we had the opportunity to sing together as a group, 100 of us crammed on the altar. And then each organization sang individually. It was the first time in the history of the Bund that we had no competition, which was wonderful. Nobody was saying, "Oh, my God, I have to watch out for them." We just had a heck of a good time. I'd just like to tell you, the people who were here were from Binghamton in Buffalo, Poughkeepsie, Syracuse, and Utica. The groups that sang ranged from four people, a quartet in Syracuse, to about 35 or 40 people from Utica. Kingston has about 25 people. Um, I'm going to leave with you. For everybody, I brought 15, that should cover everybody, that should cover all of the wards and everyone. This is our journal, please take the time to read it. There's a history in there of our club, and a little information about the Singer Bund, and what we did over the weekend. And I would just like you to follow up a little on the disappointment that we felt, and that is to go around, this is a wonderful city, I do not live in this city, I live in a tiny community across the river called Tivoli. Ever heard of it? Sure. But I'm here all the time, trust me, I've been president a long time, I've been a member for over 40 years. Get to know all of your ethnic communities. All cultures are so important, so important, and the history of those cultures is so important, which is what we try to promote. The Kingston group, I think we sang the most modern German song, so the newest. One is a German version of "My Bonnie Lies Over the Ocean," and the other one was called "Rock Me." And if you want to rock, go on YouTube, somebody mentioned YouTube earlier, and look up "Rock Me," "me" is spelt M-I. And we had the whole church rocking, and it was nice to do newer, newer songs. But really, take the time. There is one ethnic organization that dominates in this city, we all know that, it's very obvious, but there's the rest of us, and it's all colors, it's all countries, it's all continents. And I thank you for your time, and enjoy your reading material. I brought 15, I think that'll cover just about everybody.
Next speaker, please.
Ellen DeFalco, 66 Glen Street, Kingston. Council President, Alderman, members of the press and public. I stand before you once again to remind you that it is your responsibility as Alderman to be the stewards of the city's finances and budget, and not to rubber stamp every wish the mayor presents to you. Resolution 126, if passed, is a travesty. To allow a position that is sorely needed in the Building and Safety Division to be eliminated is reprehensible. Did any of you question the department's officials if they could function without this position? How are they managing with one employee down? Are you aware of the responsibilities this department is tasked with on a daily basis? When this legislative body adopts new chapters in our codes, how do you expect them to enforce without proper staffing? It's a slippery slope when you are not giving this department the tools it needs to function. Assigning a new titled position to civil service before the pending budget process is reckless. Leave this clerk position in the Building and Safety Budget where it belongs, and let the Civil Service Executive Secretary present her case for a new position and appeal to the Finance Committee at budget time, not now. Flex your muscles as level-headed Alderman and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Please come forward. Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Sebastian, I live on 173 Tembrooke. I'm here on behalf of Riverkeeper, they're a nonprofit dedicated to protecting the Hudson River. We wanted to extend our thanks for the city's recent submission of a grant to continue the phase separation of the Hasbrox CSO. This represents a major step forward, not just in terms of improving water quality for the residents of Kingston, but also for the 107,000 people who require or who drink water from the Hudson River, Poughkeepsie, Lloyd, Asopis, Ryanbeck. We hope to stay in touch as this process unfolds, and to offer our services in any way can be of assistance to the city in this process, and thank you again for being leaders on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, I now declare this portion of the meeting closed. Now go on to Claims and Communications. Hearing no discussion, they'll be on file in the clerk's office. Can I get a motion, Spence, with the second reading of the General Bills and pay say?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The bills are paid, 7-0. We will now enter in Report of Committees. Resolution number 110.
Resolution 110 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of State for a local waterfront revitalization program grant in the amount of $2 million to construct the shoreline stabilization project in the waterfront resiliency design.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 111.
Resolution 111 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for a water quality improvement program grant in the amount of $600,000 for the Phase A Hasbrox CSO sewer separation project as described in the Hasbrock Avenue CSO Sewer Shed Engineering Planning Grant by TMB Engineering PC, and to execute any and all related documents.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move on to Resolution number 112.
Resolution 112 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Environmental Facilities Corp for a green innovation grant program for up to $2 million to incorporate green infrastructure into the rehabilitation of parking lots in Midtown Kingston.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 113.
Resolution 113 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for a Climate Smart Communities Grant Program Certification Grant in the amount of $60,000 to develop a pedestrian and bicycle master plan for the city of Kingston.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move on to Resolution number 114.
Resolution 114 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for a Climate Smart Communities Protection Fund Grant in the amount of $1,250,000 to design and construct facilities for pedestrians and bicyclists on Flatbush and Foxhole Avenues.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 115.
Resolution 115 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of Transportation for a transportation alternative program project in the amount of $5 million to design and construct facilities for pedestrians and bicyclists on Flatbush and Foxhole Avenues.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 116.
Resolution 116 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Empire State Development Corporation for a market New York in the amount of $187,500 for community marketing project and to execute any and all related documents.
On the question. Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 117.
Resolution 117 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, supporting a memorializing resolution for a REPCO grant for revitalization of the metro as a NYMS downtown anchor in Midtown.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 118.
Resolution 118 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, endorsing the application of the Hudson River Maritime Museum for an EPF grant for a park project known as Rondow Riverport Phase Two.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 119.
Resolution 119 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, endorsing support for the Rare Bakery Restoration Project.
On the question. Alman Childress.
Are we there? Yes. I would just like to say that I'm very excited about this particular endorsement. This doesn't require any money or action really from the city, except they were helping the Rare Bakery Museum to get necessary funding. This is a wonderful museum project that I think is going to do exactly what we just heard about a little bit before, really expand the identity of different groups of people who made Kingston what it is today, and this is a wonderful opportunity to support this great institution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Alman Shabbat.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on that. Some of us, all of us that have grown up in Kingston have seen the waterfront area, the Rondow downtown, whatever we want to call it, has gone through some ebb and flow in my lifetime, for sure. We've, this initiative will really do a lot towards making this vital once again. If we can firm up the shorelines, we have money for some bulkheads, you know, hopefully that will lead to some development in the area, which equates to revenue for our city. With the waterfront, we possess something a lot of cities in this country don't have, namely a waterfront. We should appreciate it, we really have to, we have to upgrade it. I have been to many river walks and ports in my travels, and I see very few that can compare to the Rondow Creek and the Hudson River. I think this is a great initiative, it's only a first step, but it's a huge first step.
Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 120.
Resolution 120 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to expend funds in the first instance for a local waterfront revitalization program grant from the New York State Department of State for the Rondow Riverport Shoreline Stabilization and Public Access Project.
On the question. Alman Shabbat.
All the comments I just made apply to this, I jumped ahead a little.
Yeah, well, I kind of noticed that, but I didn't bring it to your attention.
But I still, even though two minutes have passed, I'm still firm in my belief that we should be investing in the waterfront.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 121.
Resolution 121 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing bonding in the amount of $197,500 for the required match of the New York State DEPLWRP grant-funded Rondow Riverport Shoreline Stabilization and Public Access Project.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 122.
That's the bond ordinance.
Resolution 122 of 2018, bond ordinance dated July 10, 2018, an ordinance authorizing engineering and design for the Rondow Riverport Shoreline Stabilization and Public Access Project in and for the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $197,500, and authorizing the issuance of $197,500 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Okay, this will be long roll, six votes required.
Alderman Coop.
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
Alderman Worthington.
Aye.
Alderman Carey.
Aye.
Alderman Shabbat.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morale.
Aye.
The bond is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 123.
Resolution 123 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, awarding bids for the Jacobs Valley Storm Sewer Replacement Project and authorizing the mayor to execute documents.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 124.
Resolution 124 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing adopting an additional bond ordinance in the sum of $3,680,000 for the Jacobs Valley Storm Sewer Replacement Project.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 125.
Resolution 125 of 2018, bond ordinance dated July 10, 2018, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional $3,680,000 bonds of the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay costs of the Jacobs Valley Storm Sewer Replacement Project in and for said city.
Long roll, six votes required.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
Alderman Worthington.
Yes.
Alderman Carey.
Aye.
Alderman Shabbat.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morale.
Aye.
Alderman Coop.
Aye.
Bond is adopted, 7-0. We now move on to Resolution number 126.
Resolution 126 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 Building Safety Division and Civil Service budgets.
On the question. Alman Childress.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be voting for this, because this is actually going to be an important move for streamlining the processes of our city government. We are in fact looking to hire a part-time person to take the place of the position we're moving out of Building and Safety. We've just been looking through the civil service exams, and hoping to find somebody from those exams who will be able to take up the position within a few weeks. That will help alleviate the problems that they're having, specifically with record-keeping and so forth down in Building Safety. Moreover, the position that's going to move is going to do a lot of the work, even though it'll be in a different department, the person will be doing a lot of the work for Building and Safety that they would have done anyway, relating to things like accruals in accordance with our time and attendance policy, and this will help alleviate a lot of the problems that we're having right now, also in the, with the clerk position in the Civil Service Office. So, I think this is a good idea, it's one of the things that needs to happen to streamline government, make sure that it works better, make sure that every dollar that we spend is being spent effectively and efficiently. That's why I will be voting in favor of this.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move on to Resolution number 127.
Resolution 127 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 Parks and Recreation Budget.
On the question. Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 128.
Resolution 128 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending modifications to the 2018 City Clerk's Budget.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 129.
Resolution number 129 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending modifications to the 2018 City Clerk's Budget.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 130.
Resolution 130 of 2017, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 Parking Violations Budget.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 131.
Resolution 131 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 Police Department Budget.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 132.
Resolution 132 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the Kingston Housing Authority to establish starting salaries.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 133.
Resolution 133 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, establishing standard workdays for elected and appointed officials to be reported to the office of the New York State Comptroller.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 134.
Resolution 134 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to award a bid for engineering services for the wastewater treatment facility upgrades and execute related documents.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 135.
Resolution 135 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing bonding in the amount of $1,200,000 for engineering services related to the wastewater treatment facility upgrades and execute related documents.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 136.
Resolution 136 of 2018, bond ordinance dated July 10, 2018, an ordinance authorizing engineering and design, administration, and construction inspection for Kingston wastewater treatment plant upgrades to comply with Speedy's permit modifications in and for the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $1,200,000, and authorizing the issuance of $1,200,000 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Long roll, six votes required.
Alderman Worthington.
Aye.
Alderman Carey.
Aye.
Alderman Shabbat.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morale.
Aye.
Alderman Coop.
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Aye.
The bond is adopted, 7-0. We now move to Resolution number 137.
Resolution 137 of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending Section 373-5 Subsection A of the Code of the City of Kingston, increasing the voting members of the Tree Commission.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, resolution is adopted, seven zero, we now move to resolution number one thirty-eight.
Resolution number one thirty-eight of two thousand eighteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation to secure and maintain installation of highway lighting related to the I-587 Roundabout Project.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, resolution is adopted, seven zero, we now move to resolution number one thirty-nine.
Resolution number one thirty-nine of two thousand eighteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, approving the building of a brick wall in front of the Chief James K. Riggins Jr. Police Headquarters.
On the question, Alderman Shabbat.
Thank you. I'm definitely in support of the resolution honoring late Chief Riggins. I would like to add a sentence to the resolution, however, I would like to add all designs to be subject to approval by the city of Kingston.
In the form of a motion?
Yes.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, so this will be a vote on the amended motion. On the question?
Can you just repeat the motion?
All designs to be.
All designs to be approved by the city of Kingston?
Yeah. Is that right, Steve? We're going to read what we're going to vote on, you just let me know if it's correct.
Okay. So, motion to amend resolution one thirty-nine to add all designs subject to approval by the city of Kingston?
Correct, okay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote on the amended resolution, all in favor? Opposed, resolution is amended, seven zero. Did anyone ever second that motion? I thought they did, yeah. He yelled it out, he just missed it. Okay, so now we're going to vote on the amended resolution. On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, resolution as amended passes, seven zero. We now go to resolution number one forty.
Resolution one forty of two thousand eighteen, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, repealing handicap parking on Andrews Street.
Okay, anybody want to put them in a bulk? No? Okay, on the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, resolution is adopted, seven zero, we now go to resolution number one forty-one.
Resolution one forty-one of two thousand eighteen, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, repealing handicap parking on Cross Street.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, resolution is adopted, seven zero, we now move to resolution number one forty-two.
Resolution one forty-two of two thousand eighteen, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, repealing handicap parking on Amsterdam Avenue.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, resolution is adopted, seven zero, we now move to resolution number one four-three.
Resolution one forty-three of two thousand eighteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending resolution one sixty-six of two thousand seventeen.
On the question, Alderman Shabbat.
Thank you, Mr. President. After discussing this at length at caucus last night, there were several questions coming up about finances, liability, numerous other issues that I think we should iron out before we pass legislation on it, so I'd like to make a motion to refer it back to the Public Safety Committee.
Do I have a second? Get that? Okay. Any discussion? Alderman Childress.
This is a difficult situation, we recognize that there are lots of children, lots of pedestrians who walk on the particular streets in question here. We would very much like to do something that would alleviate the fears and concerns of parents and pedestrians in that neighborhood. However, there are lots of questions relating to liability, relating to questions of who's going to pay for these, who's going to maintain them, so on and so forth, and we had hoped to get answers to those questions, but the head of the Housing Authority did not get back to us in time with those. So, I would like certainly for this to go back to committee where I think we might be able to discuss some even better solutions, such as perhaps going ahead and putting in some kind of electronic speed monitor device, a permanent one, in both of these locales that we could really do something that would be effective in this, in this bad situation. These two areas were very poorly designed, and I don't think we fixed the situation by adding simply a Band-Aid, even a Band-Aid that probably wouldn't even work that well. So, I'm in favor of sending this back and reconsidering further despite the concerns of the folks in the community there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote to refer back, all in favor. Opposed, resolution is adopted, to refer back, seven zero. We now move to resolution number one forty-four.
Resolution one forty-four of two thousand eighteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to expend funds in the first instance for the Restore New York Communities Initiative from Empire State Development for the Midtown Kingston Restore Project.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, resolution is adopted, seven zero, we now go to resolution number one forty-five.
Resolution one forty-five of two thousand eighteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to expend funds in the first instance for projects funded by U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Grants BF nine six two seven three eight zero zero and BF nine six two seven four six zero zero for Phase One and Phase Two environmental site assessments and related activities.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, resolution is adopted, seven zero. We now move to a second reading. And vote of Local Law Number Four.
Local Law Four of two thousand eighteen, a local law of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending Local Law Three of two thousand sixteen regarding the Sustainable Energy Loan Program.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed, Local Law is adopted, seven zero. That concludes the committees for this evening. Does anyone have anything before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Alderman Shabbat, oh, you've been very involved this evening.
I got a couple here. I'd like to close, close the meeting in memory of three individuals. John Cloonan, born in Kingston, John received his civil service engineer and MBA, he worked thirty-six years for New York City as part of the Watershed Program. He also served as a Eucharistic Minister. He moved to Jekyll Island in Georgia, he was very active in a lot of areas right there. He leaves behind two sons and two brothers in our area. Paul Jordan, Paul was a U.S. Navy veteran, served in Korea. In nineteen fifty-five, Paul came to Kingston to work for Herzog Supply Company as a temporary position, as he thought at the time. However, after sixty-three years, he retired as Executive VP of Herzog's. Even, he was eighty-three years old, right up till he was eighty-three, Mr. Jordan used to come in to work with his suit and tie on every day. He was a real, a real gentleman, a pleasure to talk to. He was involved with the Rotary Club, Calabar, St. Joseph's Church, he was also a member of the Thirty-five Hundred Hiking Club, if anybody happens to know what that is. He leaves behind his children, Betsy, David, Red, Todd, and many grandchildren. Also, Mary Boyle, Mary's born in Kingston, went to Kingston High School, worked for years as a school nurse teacher in the Kingston School District, she also was a Eucharistic Minister. She was in the Ancient Order of Hibernians, leaves beside, behind her husband, John, five children, and many, many grandchildren.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Alderman Morale.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to close in memory Robert Gardner of Twenty Emerson Street, who passed away on June eleventh. He was at the time Kingston resident, World War Two, who worked thirty-five years and then at General Home, but the role he would most like to be remembered for is as a president. Wife of sixty-four years, Marie Gardner, and five children.
Thank you. Alderman Worthington?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to close in memory of George Knox, he passed away on July fourth, and while he did not reside in Kingston, he served Kingston, he was a man of service, longtime member of the church that I attend, and on this Saturday, we'll celebrate his life, and it truly will be a celebration because he, I've been knowing him since I was a little girl, and I'm going to stop talking because I'm going to get emotional, but I would like to close in his memory.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else, can I get a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Opposed? Hereby are adjourned until the next regular scheduled meeting. Thank you very much.